So we shared this information at the SCAPUS annual town hall. So we've had a good number of opportunities to share this information and get some feedback. And I think this being the halfway point through the project, so to speak, we are going to have an opportunity to share more information with the stakeholder advisory committee two more times, and then we're looking at potentially another work session sometime in the fall or late summer. And next slide with that, I'll hand it over to Buck.
Thank you. So this process is, it's called a housing needs analysis. And it's basically kind of exactly what it sounds like. The process is to book 20 years out. I know that your community is also doing a 50-year study. But this, this process is, it does fulfill a certain requirement under the state's land use planning rules for goal 10. And so the, the time period that we're looking at is 20 years. And then we're going to help kind of forecast that forward and make it useful for the 50-year process. But the main reason that you, you do this type of study is to, for your own planning efforts. So it's really a land use study. You're getting ultimately looking at residential land use and zoning and the land you have available for the, for those uses. And so the process involves first talking or coming up with a forecast or an assessment of demand for housing, which I'll be talking about. And then of coming up with an estimate of the remaining land inventory for your supply of land to accommodate that housing over the next 20 years. So that's kind of the supply side, which we'll talk about afterwards. So we've, we've prepared two pieces of analysis for this that are they, is it in their packets tonight, Lori?
They have.
The full reports?
They have this.
Okay, so the full reports have a lot of detail, a lot of analysis in there. Tonight we'll give a kind of a highlight of the, of the top numbers and sort of a summary. But there's a lot more to review in there when you, when you have a chance to do that. Next slide, please. So in SCAPUS, the, this gives an idea of how your community has grown and how it's forecast to grow into the future. Luckily, we just had the 2020 census completed. So we've got some better numbers on the current population and households to work off of as sort of a baseline. The, what we do is then we then try to forecast that forward to 2023 to come up with a current estimate for the 50-year planning period. 2023 is kind of the, the base year, so that's what we're using here as well. And then forecast forward to 2043. So your community has grown a lot in, in the last 20 years. It's added 3,200 people, almost 1,300 households and slightly fewer housing units. So that's just between 2000 and 2020. And then as we look into the future, the forecast calls for SCAPUS to add another almost 20,000 people in population. That's would be growing by kind of another 25% or so. Another almost 1,000 households and over 1,000 housing units. So generally, as we forecast forward, we say that you want your number of housing units getting built to be slightly higher than your number of households so that you have some vacancy built in there. Your current vacancy is very low. So we build in an assumption, not only that you need vacancy for those future households, but you need a little more vacancy now. So there's even some more cushion there. The forecasted growth rate that we use comes from Portland State University Population Research Program. That's kind of a requirement of how these studies are done. So PSU has done official forecasts for every community in the state. And that is the number that we need to use for this study. The, I mentioned vacancy. The share of family households is about 70%, which is in line with the, with the state and the county. Next slide, please.
So just before we do that, the census listed our 2,000 population at 4,976. And, and the reason I point this out is that one of the struggles that Lori and I have had throughout this process is that the numbers in the reports that have been generated primarily by Portland State's Population Research Center have simply been wrong. And so like whether our growth is 1.3% going forward is something that none of us will know. But what our population was in the 2000 census, what it was in the 2010 census, what it was in the 2020 census are objective numbers that we know what they are. And so the way that it works is if you have, it is 5,300 people instead of 4,976, and the population growth rate in that 10-year period is larger. And then the population growth rate in the next 10 is larger. And then if you look at that 20-year, which is significantly larger, and that 1.3% per year really doesn't seem like it's accurate. And that's consistent with what we have found over the past, in particular, like three, five years, where we've just been processing so many applications for housing. So we, we've been trying to get accurate information into this process, and it's been very, very difficult. And that's not our consultants' fault if they have to work off the numbers that they work off. But if, as we, I would just encourage you, as we think about how much time do we want to spend, how much staff time in particular do we want to spend on this? If we're starting with data that's already provably false, then no, that kind of speaks to the process.
So I would follow up, Lori. I hope you're here for the next 20 years. But as we continue to review our housing needs, is there a way for us to capture that information? And knowing that the forecast from PSU traditionally is never going to be 100% accurate. So if we were to look at the five-year increments, and I don't know the timelines in which it is released, probably with, in line with the census, that we're tracking what the forecast was and what the actual is so that we can hopefully kind of get a better picture of where we're intending to go and where we actually land?
Yeah, it's every four years now that they update that forecast. And yes, we can do that. The issue though is that we're required to use PSU's forecast in these adoptable documents. And so that's where the frustration comes in because we can anecdotally know that we have more growth. But in our documents we're adopting, they have to reflect PSU's numbers. So that's, that's the sticky point where we're at. Now, you know, I don't know, we, Beth Goodman, who's with Echo Northwest, who's kind of doing a lot of the other pieces of the 50-year plan. Her concern is even if we were to wait till 2024, the numbers could go down further. And so it's like, does it make sense? I, I know, I hear what Peter's saying. It's like, how, how do you move forward when you don't have accurate data? If it's not going to get fixed in the next three years because it's a problem with PSU, does that mean we stop our process and don't do this? Or does it mean that we know internally that we may need to update this, say, in five more years to make sure we're capturing the growth we have seen and continually have the conversation with PSU? Or do we halt it and say, we're going to wait to see what happens in 2024? I don't know what the right answer is. I know it gives us ideas so that we can plan. I think Beth has some preliminary thoughts that even with these numbers, it's going to justify like urban reserves. So I think there's still useful information we're going to get. But we'll have to decide how we kind of want to move forward with it.
And yeah, and with that, thank you, because I lean on the latter of that we would want to make that adjustment, even if it's for our own internal use in planning, right? I would be curious, and maybe you could educate me, does the state or the feds indicate that we have to utilize PSU's data?
It's the state.
And is that due to the fact that they, or first, they make every community use that?
Yes.
Because they are the go-to?
That's correct.
Right? There is no other then?
No.
Good to know. Thank you.
And these, their population estimates are also utilized in order to determine how much shared state revenue each community gets. So like when you read about the census saying Portland had a population reduction of 11,000 and PSU had them plus 5,000, what that means is the difference between those two numbers is, you know, the state shared funds for, you know, 16,000 people. So the fact that we've been shorted over the last, significantly shorter over the last 10 years really adds up to hundreds of thousands.
Thank you. All those.
A quick question. Sorry. So I mean, maybe this may have been asked in the past, but why are the, why is PSU giving wrong information if that's the only resource that's being used for data? I'm just wondering, how long has it been incorrect?
I think they've been, how long's it been, maybe less than 10 years since PSU has been actually the one identified as needing to provide the numbers? I don't have a great answer for that. I don't, I don't know why, why it's occurring or, or why the issue is. I know that they provide data and you can look on their website and see the forecast. And they have reasons why, you know, they expect, you know, birth rates are declining, things like that. Family sizes are getting smaller over time. There's, but, but as far as, I can't, I couldn't even venture a guess. Peter might know more.
I can speak to it.
Brendan has some information.
So what's happened at PSU is they have, or even longer than they've been doing these forecasts, they estimate the population of all the cities once per year. And what happens is between the major censuses, every 10 years, they're coming up with their best estimate. And I, for what frankly is very understandable reasons, as you get further and further away from the last 10-year census, PSU's numbers tend to be a little off. And so what's happened is, is that the forecast, the last time they did a forecast for SCAPUS was prior to the 2020 census. And so their beginning number that they used, their estimate for 2020 was lower than what the census then came out a year or whatever later and said, no, this was your actual population. So they underestimated your growth over that last 10 years. And that is part of what they factored into forecast going forward. So that unfortunately is kind of what we're dealing with across the state because everyone got their census numbers at the same time, some went too high and some were too low. But you know, your SCAPUS's growth rate over the last 10 years was actually more like 2% per year. So quite a bit higher. And then, but their forecast is, is that it was slowing down. So, and this, they even reduced your forecasted rate from the last time you did a housing needs analysis, which was four or five years ago. So it's, it's frustrating. It's something that I've personally talked to PSU about and the LCD about. It doesn't look like anything's going to happen then. The, the rule to use PSU's number is not just a rule, it's written into the law. It's in, like in Oregon state statute. So there's only so much flexibility that staff on any level has. So I, I did want to point out one other thing because Peter mentioned, I'm sorry, the city attorney mentioned the census numbers. I neglected to say that these are the numbers, our estimates for the urban growth boundary and not just the city limits. And I think probably most of you folks are familiar with that difference. But so the urban growth boundary is larger than the city limits. In SCAPUS, you do happen to have some areas of older rural housing that do have residents and housing in there. And so in trying to estimate up from the census numbers at the, at the city limit level to the UGB, these are a little bit larger than you'll see if you just go to the census website.
But the big report had are just city numbers and those numbers were wrong.
The SU forecast, I mean, yeah.
How wrong are we talking? Like 2, 300, 1,000?
Well, so.
What's the differential?
If you're going, if you're looking at numbers like ours and you're underestimating by 300 people a year on a 10-year basis, that, that differences in state shared revenue is, is probably, I mean, it's, I think, what did I calculate that it was $60,000 in 2020 that we got? I can't recall it. But you know, over a decade, that can be significant. And then the, the difference in 400 people, if you're projecting growth forward, I mean, the difference between 2% and 1.3% can also be significant. And so I looked at the tri-county area to see, and they had overestimated the population in Portland, Beaverton, Banks and Barlow, which I didn't even know was a city until I saw it listed. And then they underestimated the population in every other city. In some cities by very little, in some cities by a significant amount. Generally speaking, the higher the growth number that the city had, the bigger discrepancy there was in the PSU numbers. So if you had cities like King City that had very high population growth as a percentage, they were well underestimated. Same thing with communities like Estacada. And I think that's statewide. So any of these kind of boom, booming areas like Woodburn that are really growing now, those on a percentage basis were really underestimated.
Good question. Am I on here?
I guess.
Some of our growth is attributed to expanding the city boundaries as well, as well as the urban growth. And, and as far as the implications for our community, city itself is a pretty easily predicted number of housing opportunities, you know? I think, you know, it would seem to me. And, and where our real growth is going to take place is in the nearby areas. And I don't know, is there any accounting for that? Because they affect what we need to have in our city as well. I mean, they're not in the city, but they think they're in SCAPUS.
Yeah, we'll get, we're heading to that, to talk about the inventory and, and specific maps and so on. I think that that will get to what you're asking.
I just had a quick follow-up question too. So I mean, what, Lori, both you and Peter kind of mentioned, you know, timeline. And you know, what, what would you say is in your guys' opinion that things are going to change between now and the next time we would need to, or a next, an update would be done that from PSU? Do you think that there would be any adjustments done? Are we looking at the same accuracy as we are now?
I think if there's, if there's sufficient political pressure, then we might get. And, and I think that's why it's really important to talk about this issue in public meetings because all of these numbers in these reports are very confusing, even for someone like me that does a lot of land use law. And you know, I started looking at this because the numbers that I was seeing out of Portland State, particularly on the northern Oregon coast, were just completely inconsistent with what I was experiencing. And in, in Clatsop County, with the exception of Cannon Beach, the, the range is Portland State was off by between 4X and 8X. So they had underestimated between, for instance, Gerhart, we had over 24% growth and they had something like 6. So if you're looking at an entire county, we're talking about Astoria, Warrenton, D side where I think they were off by 8X. I mean, you get, so you understand why they're now in a housing crisis. And what happens when they come up with the no need for UGB expansion, which is what they've come up for here? And that's if you do 1, 1.2% a year for the next 20, you don't need an expansion. Practically what that also means is we can't rezone. So if we have commercial land that hasn't developed for years because it's too far from a highway or industrial, maybe that would be more efficient to be housing. But if there is no need, then we don't, we can't rezone it, practically speaking. And so I think that's one of my major frustrations is if we talk about how to deal with affordable, housing affordability, because we're talking about workforce housing. If we have these numbers that don't at all reflect market reality, they've taken away all the tools that would be most efficient. So like Portland can't rezone the Lloyd Center and do, you know, highly dense housing and use the existing parking structure, which is much more efficient than expanding UGB. So anyway, not to get on a soapbox.
Bottom line is I don't know that we have, you know, a great feeling that, that it's going to change in the next four years. Although I think conversations are going to start to be had at the state level.
But to follow that up, we can be reaching out to our state senate and also our state representative, house representative to indicate that we would like to see that there would be better use of the funds that are going to PSU for this information. So that's something that I would ask city manager Rains.
I believe Peter's had a conversation very recently with our new senator about this.
So if we can continue to have those advocacy for, for better utilization of the program would be greatly appreciated.
Check here. Okay. I'm going to keep maybe moving through some of these slides, just looking at the time we have left. While I'm playing, please keep asking questions if they come up. This is a look at your basic commuting dynamics. It may not be a great surprise. You've got a lot of folks living here who commute out to work elsewhere. A lot of your workforce comes in from elsewhere. In the metro area, this isn't that unusual of a pattern, frankly. So, but it is a pretty high turnover. So one, one way that this interfaces with housing is just thinking about, are the, are there people who are working here in your local businesses that might live here? If you had different housing opportunities, are there people in your, perhaps your service sector or something like that who can't currently find affordable housing or a place to rent? So that's, that's the interface with housing. But next slide. So in terms of your current housing conditions, you're about 70% owner, 30% renters. Most of your owner, owner occupied units are larger, three or plus, three or more bedrooms. And most of your rental units are two bedrooms or fewer. But almost 40% of your rental units are three or more bedrooms, which is, which is good. That means you've got some supply of, of larger rentals out there, which is a good thing. On the right, that chart shows the breakdown of the, what housing types are available in your current housing stock by renter or owner. So in green, you'll see that almost all of your owner occupied housing stock is either single-family detached homes or manufactured homes, which is really kind of a different category of single-family detached usually. And then for your rental stock, you've got much more of a mix in there. But still over 20% of your rental stock is also single-family detached homes, which is good for a lot of renting families. Next slide. So in terms of affordability levels, this is the share of households among owners and renters who are spending more than 30% of their gross income on housing costs. It's a commonly used measure of housing affordability. And essentially it means spending 30% or more of your income on all housing costs. So not just mortgage or rent, but also insurance and utilities and all the things that it takes to maintain a house. So as you'd expect, when you look at income groups along the, the bottom axis there, that the lower income folks have, the, the more likely they are to be in housing that, that is sort of presenting a cost burden to them. So for renters, you see all the way up until folks making about 50, or households making about $50,000 a year, that over 50% are still reporting spending more than that on their housing costs. So that's, that's a lot. Next slide. And so this is a picture of the 20-year land need, or I'm sorry, housing need to the year 2043. So as I said on the first slide, there's about, there's a need, or I'm sorry, there's growth of about 2,000 new residents, 1,000 new households, over 1,000 new housing units needed. This is our projection of what the breakdown of those needed housing types might be. So most of them will continue to be single-family homes, reflecting just the nature of SCAPUS and the share of single-family neighborhoods that you already have. But there is a forecast for more other types of units going forward, more attached units, more of what we're calling these days sort of middle, missing middle units, which are townhomes, different kinds of plexes that might be mixed into some lower, lower density neighborhoods. Your community is going to reach the point in the next 20 years where you'll be required to deal with House Bill 2001 that has some requirements on allowing those housing types in your low-density neighborhoods. So that's the projection of the breakdown on the right. And that's kind of the demand side that I'm going to talk about. And then CJ is going to talk a little bit about the land inventory.
Lori, do we have anything on mother-in-law dwellings or non, non-attached dwellings as a part of our housing stock and/or allowing for permitting of that type of buildings?
Yeah, yeah, you can have one accessory dwelling unit, ADU, per single-family residential property.
Do we know any, what inventory that looks like? I, I know of like one or maybe two homes.
There's not very many. Yeah, it's not utilized in the city very often at all. I think in the seven years I've been here, we may have permitted two, just not very many.
So there is potentially an opportunity to incentivize that type of additional dwelling if that's something that we identify as a potential option moving forward?
Yes. I know a lot of times what that incentive might look like is not charging SDCs for that second dwelling unit. We don't already. So I'm not sure what else we would incentivize to encourage that. But it would be, it's, it's an underutilized tool for sure.
Especially with existing house, house, house inventory, but potentially with new construction, if that was incorporated in. if that was incorporated in the design, something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Good question too. I, I, I have a concern for low income housing. I, I think we actually have quite a bit of low income housing and, and it's, but it's not available to low, low income people often. And, uh, and we build, we've got a couple of plans for some, uh, low income development. Uh, but there's no, as I understand it, there's no way or no plan at this time that those units will be owner occupied. A lot of those are going to be grabbed up by landlords because they're going to be McDanny rentals. And, uh, is there a way to encourage, uh, low income people size Habitat for Humanity to actually own the homes that they live in?
It's, uh, it's difficult for ownership housing. It's mu, it's, it's a lot tougher to get dedicated affordable housing built, as an ownership opportunity compared to getting, uh, rental housing built for, uh, those income segments. So you need agencies really dedicated to do it, like Habitat for Humanity. Other options are looking at, um, housing types that will typically, you know, sell at a lower price point if it's built. So for instance, you'd expect townhomes to sell probably at a lower price point than a, than a single family home built at the same time. And then, uh, there are other options that are come, becoming more common, like cottage clusters, um, is something that's being talked about now. There are some more examples about that in the community. But those are really trying to deal with, um, or encourage building a specific type of unit, usually kind of smaller and more modest in the hopes that it's just going to be at a lower price point.
Still, that's going to make an attractive rental for somebody too. Is there, there's some program out there that you're aware of where you can give priority to owner occupied, uh, properties?
Not, and not, only through agencies that are dedicated to doing that.
Like HUD having a financing program for first time homeowners that need a certain income threshold. I think that's what you're indicating is that some type of financing option?
Financing option, just to get owner occupied units, uh.
First time home owners.
And so cottages are great, but if they, they're all going to end up being rentals eventually, then not what I envisioned it would be.
I think it's difficult for housing being so expensive now for young adults coming out of college with a huge debt in college and then trying to buy a, purchase a home, even if they do come out with a degree. And I'm seeing it because I'm seeing it for my kids and then other people's kids are there that age. And what they're, what they're doing is buying vans, living off of vans. Right, so, um, we, I, I think you're talking about also like first time home buying, you know, just, or rates, things like that, but. Something that we have to address because we do want the young, the young generation be able to buy a home and, and then be able to settle here and then grow, um, you know, raise our family. So how can we do that with this housing crisis, which is not just the lack of, but, and it's not affordable for them?
I think those are really good points. So, um, as this project moves forward, we're going to get into kind of the next phase is talking about solutions and presenting some ideas and strategies, uh, about those types of things.
I did have one more slide. Um, so this gets into what we were talking about earlier. I, uh, with the, um, report that we've permit, uh, provided for the housing needs analysis, there is a appendix or addendum, I guess, um, that talks about a couple of alternative growth projections. Now, um, as we've been talking about, these cannot be used for the official growth rates within the housing needs analysis. So we've, um, as we've gone through this, we've thrown out some alternative numbers and just run some quick alternative numbers that may be useful for the conversation, may be useful for planning purposes, but they cannot be, they cannot be used as the official forecast. It has to be the PSU number. So, um, what you see here is we've, um, we've done a couple of different things. Uh, the, the baseline number is the, um, just to make things extra complicated, the baseline growth forecast is the number from the report. Uh, the PSU's forecast was 1.3. But the census number for 2020 changed, so that turned the 1.3% per year to 1% per year. It compressed that growth rate.
Our population exceeded what they said. And so instead of continuing with the 1.3, which under their projection would have been a no UGB expansion, no rezone, the number then dropped from 1.3 to 1, which still gets to that no UGB expansion, no rezone. So we did a lot more growth than they thought, and so the projection going forward dropped.
So the alternatives we've looked at.
Yeah, right. I'm sorry.
Uh, so the, the alternatives we looked at is what if we, what if we could just go ahead and use that 1.3%? Um, that would, if we could, that would get us to a higher number in 2043, rather than having to use the number they gave us. Um, and then the 1.8 is what was used in your last, uh, housing needs analysis in 2018, uh, much closer to the actual growth rate that you've seen over the last 10 years. So, um, these are alternatives. We'll keep, um, being able to supply these if they're helpful for planning and, um, maybe for talking to, uh, PSU in the future. But, uh, those are included in the report as well.
Brendan, can you help explain what the difference is? I don't see a legend between the blue gradient and red gradient line.
Yeah, sorry. Um, the, oh yeah. I think there was a legend and I dropped it.
I understand the blue.
So blue, the blue is the population and the orange and red at, at the bottom is the estimated, um, future housing need based on that. So, uh, the, again, from the report, that, that bottom number of about 4,600 is the total sort of housing need, new and current that we were forecasting in the report. And if we were to use the highest, um, highest alternate rate, then it, it's about 1,000 more units that would be needed.
Like Peter, like you indicated, that's a huge discrepancy for us to try to plan with.
Well, and our actual number was two. And if you look at two over the decade, that isn't 2% a year. It's at, at the beginning of the decade, because we were coming out of a recession, there wasn't a lot of housing growth. And as the market picked up in the UGBs in the metro region heightened, then our number went. So if you look at our, like, 2015 to 2020 number, that's probably the best representative of the growth we're going to see going forward, which is going to, which, I mean, I can't imagine it didn't exceed like 3% a year.
Yeah, well, yeah, because just from 2010 to 2020, it was, it was a solid 2% annual.
True number within those periods. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to shift gears for just a moment here and talk to you, uh, shared information on the man side. Uh, I'm going to spend a little time talking about the supply side of things. And this is a technical analysis that goes through a process of looking at all the land within your UGB, kind of whittling it down little by little by removing pieces that aren't residential or aren't capable of holding residential land or environmentally constrained, already developed, um, and going through a process to where we get to, uh, a net buildable acres. So in, in terms of more detail there, we start with your, all the land in your UGB, because it includes the areas outside of your city where you're expected to grow over 20 years. Um, and then we look at, um, all the land that is capable of supporting residential development. In case of scappus, it's both your residential zones and your commercial zones, which also allow residential development on them. Um, and then we remove anything in those type of zones that are in common ownership or are committed to, say, park, school, or like an HOA sort of, um, piece of property there, those get removed from there. Then we take, uh, a list of different types of environmental constraints, flood plains, wetlands, steep slopes, um, all things that are, um, prohibited to build on or, um, very difficult to build on. And we overlay those residential areas, move those as well. And then whatever's left, we apply some assumptions in terms of if you're going to develop these lands, you may need to dedicate right away. If you're a larger parcel and you're doing a subdivision, then we make an assumption that you're going to dedicate , um, so much of that property for streets and other infrastructure there. And what we wind up with, what the result is, is a net buildable acres, both vacant and partially vacant land that is used to, um, estimate what your land supply is. Now, I think this is important to recognize that there are some things this is not. This is, um, doesn't capture things like a property owner's willingness to develop. So somebody may be sitting on a large piece of property with the intent of living on that large piece of property perpetuity. So it doesn't capture things like that. It doesn't capture things like, does it pencil out to develop or anything like that? Those sort of aspects in terms of your land supply are elements that in the second half of this project where, um, we see needs and we can look at strategies to say, well, can we incentivize some of these areas to develop? Can we make it a little bit more likely to pencil out that sort of thing? And so those are, those aren't included in this technical land supply analysis. So the next slide here, um, the map on the right kind of gives you an idea. The map on the right gives you an idea of the different, uh, environmental constraints that are on there. So the blues are wetlands or, or flood plains, the reds are steep slopes, that sort of thing. And then the table on the left gives you an idea of the, what the, the buildable land inventory results are in terms of acreage. And by that estimate, you have, uh, just under 250 acres in total. Um, overall, it's, uh, roughly split between inside your city limits and outside, but within your UGB. And, um, a good portion of that is partially, partially vacant, meaning that there is someone currently living on that property that's developed in some fashion or another. And the thought process there is that in, um, some cases, it's, it's large enough that you can subdivide, you can add another property, unnecessarily an ADU, but, um, another unit on there. Um, so those are things that, uh, should be taken into account there. It, it's actually expected for a lot of the area inside your UGB to be partially vacant. Those are going to be your larger rural lots that when they get brought into your city limits, are likely to add several units per lot. So we expect those to be partially vacant. Take a second to see, yes.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, it wouldn't count things like the large piece of ground that we have along, uh, Crown Zellerback Road and West Lane and Falls Parker Way on the way, west side over there, uh, is probably.
The Turtech, the Turtech Trailhead, is that what you're asking about?
No, I, I, it, it's the, it's the scapula sand and gravel. They're, they're filling in that, that, uh, uh, large piece of ground. And if it's like the other piece, it will eventually be homes. And I don't know what their plans for it are, but it's a huge piece of ground. And, uh, we've got those mining, uh, issues all over our area. And some of them are, are, I mean, that's for most of them, that's their plan is to turn them into housing units eventually.
That one in particular, though, the base designation for the comp plan is industrial. So we would not consider that, any of that in this inventory.
And so that couldn't be changed then to, uh, to residential then?
Not, not at this, not, not easily at all, yeah. And for this purpose, it's not looked at for this inventory.
Seemed like they'd be competing with their own properties over here that we have for industrial.
Well, that was their, you know, I mean, that was their first. And then there was a UGB expansion to bring in the additional land east of the airport. So, um, yeah, but that industrial land, Parker's pit and everything was already industrial prior to the last UGB expansion. So.
Of course, I know it's probably always like that.
Yeah.
I think the properties where they worked there on the other side of Brown Z would probably like that at one time too. I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You know, the questions on the acreage side of things. So this next slide here, the map on the right shows a map of, um, a development status that we've applied to all the residential parcels on there. Green being vacant, yellow being partially vacant and red being developed and, um, not counted for in the inventory. Table on the right takes those acreage numbers and, um, applies some assumptions in terms of development capacity by saying, uh, you could do anywhere from, uh, five dwelling units per acre in your lowest density residential zone up to, um, an estimate of 15 dwelling units per acre in, in your commercial zones, which is consistent with kind of the more multifamily developments that we're, we're seeing here in the, the area here. And then we essentially multiply those numbers by the, the amount of available acreage in those areas and wind up with the result of a potential development capacity of just over 1,200 units. Most of it, it's, it's, most of it is available within city limits. About 700 of the, of your overall capacity is inside city limits. And within that, um, almost two thirds of it is from larger lots that have the potential to redevelop into multiple units. So they're partially vacant in some way. And outside your city limits, um, approximately room for another 500 units. Again, most of that is partially vacant, those lots that are, um, you know, have, have a house on it, but are expected to develop at, uh, higher densities than what the rural nature they are now. So, um, any questions on this slide here?
I do have a question for you CJ. So when I look at, uh, your slide 12 and you give us the baseline adjusted one and two for the rate growth and how many people are going to have. Then we bump this up against the housing unit, what you just took us through. So perfect world, we were able to do everything you say here. So we could pretend, we have the ability to add 1,236.
Units.
Units that are all varying in capacity. So my next question, and maybe it's in your slide. So do we meet that 1.8 growth based off billable lands that we have right now? Like what's the tie out?
Yeah, so the, the, the comparison will be in the next slide there, yes. You are, um, anticipating very well. Yeah, so, and, and one more thing to say about this in terms of the, the land inventory here. This is a, a figure, a metaphor is this is how big your jar is. And whether or not it gets filled is a matter of market drivers and availability. So, um, with that, we can jump into the next slide and I'll hand it back over.
One quick question for you. Um, on projected density. So for example, you say R1, you could put five dwelling units per acre. Is that what we currently have zoned in our code right now?
Yes.
This is all.
It's reflective of our current capacities and densities allowed.
So here is the comparison between the two. We've talked about supply and demand. So the, um, basically what we try to do is, is break down both by general category of housing, uh, low density, medium density or high density. There's some examples there of what different housing types those include. And then, um, the land inventory, again, the total unit capacity of the, of the land inventory was a little over 1,200 units. The, um, average density, we're talking about, uh, from that capacity is presented in the middle there. The reason that the, um, the high density housing type is shown as having a lower average density is because your high density land is, uh, residential land is really your commercial land. That's where it's allowed. So, um, for this analysis, we, um, included an assumption that some of that land would be used for. included an assumption that some of that land would be used for residential and some would be used for commercial. So that's why uh the sort of blended density is so low. Um for uh in the places where there would be residential happening on those commercial lands, I think we assume a density of 15, remember? Uh yeah, 15 units per acre. So anyway, on the right is the demand that I talked about. Uh you'll see the total of 1,041 units demanded, broken down by housing type. And so what that's showing is that um we're finding, you know, when we really look at the type of land, how it's zoned versus the type of need, there is a surplus um we're finding or estimating in your low-density zoned lands, but a deficit in lands that are zoned properly for medium-density or high-density uses. And the the overall totals at the bottom come out at a surplus, but really through this process, you need to consider all your different types of land. They're not interchangeable. So um we are finding a slight deficit of your your medium-density and high-density lands. This is obviously using the baseline forecast from the main report. Are there any questions about this?
Yeah, so my quick question would be in regards to the high-density multifamily apartments, only showing an average of the 5.7 because of the incorporation of the commercial zoning. What we're thinking, what I'm thinking of then right there is, okay, we're planning for mixed-use buildings along, say, main corridor that's commercial, um rather than housing units for, I don't know, say, uh you know, they used to do the lumber mill and you'd have housing at the uh the company housing or something like that, right? We're not looking at units of housing at the work site. And so we know that we're limited on what mixed-use buildings would be in, say, a downtown overlay or along certain uh uh areas. If a large multifamily apartment complex were to be built in a vacate, vacant land, that would change that average drastically based on the number of units. Is that correct? Because you're using just what our projected commercial zone would be able to create as a density of units. So I I guess I'm just looking at the different variety of housing that we would be incorporating in certain areas of town and how that would actually play as a variable in that average density outcome.
I can speak a little more on on that topic in terms of our our assumptions there. So as far as your commercial zones go, we know it's not gonna entirely develop as residential. It's gonna be a mix. And the way, because scapus, it allows residential outright to family residential outright in those commercial zones, it is possible to get 100% residential element, and I've seen that here. And in in terms of what we've seen recently and based off of recent historical trends, made an assumption that 40% of your overall commercial land, or another way to frame it is 40% of individual lots, um each individual lot would get developed with some form of residential capacity on it. It is, it's a blind eye in terms of the mix of use, whether it's like a mixed-use development on the site or not. Um we weren't able to capture that at that level of detail, just because there isn't a lot of mixed-use precedent area.
Our clock is showing 6:57, not the wall clock, but the actual clock. Um we have uh a need to rearrange the room for the next meeting that starts at 7:00. So if you have any sort of last-minute wrap-ups or final thoughts, we'd love to hear them.
Um if you wanna jump to uh the next few slides here, so yeah, um next one, I think we'll go towards. So in terms of the the latter half of the project, this is just a a look forward. What we'll be doing is we'll be looking at um updates to the comprehensive plan, both your findings and your policies, and make recommendations um within there to update and reflect the the study that we've done here. And then on your next slide there, we'll also be have discussion about some potential housing strategies. And the list here encompasses two slides. There's just under 20 strategies that we'll be having discussions with your advisory committee, your city staff, to see what would make sense here. And it ranges from um a lot of land supply strategies, um policy and development code strategies and incentives either by through financial or funding sources or different sort of programs. We'll come back towards the end of the project with recommendations on, these are the things that the city can do that are actionable would help address the the housing needs that we've identified as part of this project.
I have um just one point of clarification. Um I'll make this quick. When you go back to slide 14 and I look at the new unit needs for 2043, math isn't my strong suit, but I think I'm on the right track. I'm looking at low-density. That's 57.9% versus mid-density 21%, high-density 20%. We're 70% single-family. So this, I'm I'm looking at this data and and questioning like, are we intentionally trying to build less single-family homes based off these numbers in this assessment? Is that part of the plan? And am I reading this correctly?
So part of that is is coming, uh most of that is coming from our findings in the report of your balance of um housing for owners versus renters. And so we find uh the, we found that the most the lowest vacancy and kind of the greatest shortage currently was in your rental stock, even though there's also low vacancy in your in your ownership stock, we understand. But basically, to make up for that um deficit that you have now and reflect um our projections of what is gonna happen with your demographics going forward, uh this, that share of housing that's more uh kind of appropriate or suitable for renters is expected to be a larger share of that future housing need. It's important to remember that these are the new units. This isn't, this isn't going to be all the housing stock. This is just the net new units. If if you want to look at that in the report or send us follow-up questions, we'd be happy to to follow up about that.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Without the work session is adjourned.
Thank you, guys.